It is six o'clock on Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Rutland Select Board. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We are being recorded by the Rutland Town Staff, as well as live streamed on local access. We will be re-aired on local access and we have Zoom access as well. We are, well, the recordings will also be put on our YouTube and other social medias as well. Can you please stand for the pledge? Before we get started, I wanted to welcome our newly elected member Alex Mullet to my left right now. Otherwise, we're a five-member board in person with Harry Sackman, Paul Mattson, myself, Leah, Alex, and Jen Ledger. We just had an election yesterday, so Tom went off. Thank you to Tom for all of his service and time off or time on the board. It was a great three years. Tom, I really enjoyed working with you. Thank you. And welcome Alex. Moving into minutes, Treasury Warrant and Payroll. We have approval of Treasury Warrant twenty-five dash twenty-two and twenty-five dash PW twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve Treasury Warrant twenty-five dash twenty-two and twenty-five dash PW twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Any comments, questions, concerns?
Austin, anything?
Nothing, Major.
Nothing? Okay.
Roll call, Harry.
Sackman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
White man.
Oh, aye.
Whitman, aye. We have approval of meeting minutes from the Public Information Session on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five that Jen, I believe you took. That was the Friday morning at the Council on Aging. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Roll call, Harry, actually.
Sackman, aye.
Sorry, may I? I just realized that I didn't put place on here. Do I have to do that? The location of the meeting?
No.
That's okay, okay.
That's okay.
That's it, sorry.
No, that's fine.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it.
Roll call, Harry.
Sackman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
White man.
Oh, I'm staying.
Whitman, aye. And then we have the meeting minutes from the regular meeting are April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as printed.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
One thing that I picked up on after some back and forth in future agenda requests, it says that I asked that the Wachusett Road be added to the next agenda item. In going back, I said in the coming weeks' agendas that Tamika and I would look at it because knowing that we had a board election tonight and everything and there's a lot of history, I didn't want to make promises that it would be here. Is everyone okay with that amendment?
Sure.
That is, yeah. Any other conversation? So, we're okay to approve as amended?
Yes, to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Do you second that?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Sackman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
White man.
Oh, I'm staying.
Whitman, aye. Thank you. And then, is there anyone here for public comment? Uh, Jean Beck, name and address, please.
Jean Sigliano, I just wanted to thank you for improving the sound at town meeting because I have asked for it a number of times. It was much better. We could hear. And secondly, I just wanted to know what you guys wanted from me as CM-RPC alternate? Because I send you stuff, but I don't hear anything and I know you can't all respond because it violates open meetings. I don't want to be a pest. I don't know if you're getting those things also that I'm getting or you want me to continue to forward you things.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think that that's a great question and we can, I think you forwarding it is great. Obviously, most of the CM-RPC stuff comes through the planner generally, but it's nice for the Select Board to be kind of aware and if something misses the planner, Planning Board, and Town Administrator. I think Austin, does Town Administrator usually get the emails from CM-RPC also? But I think if it's something that you think is really of value to town, to definitely kind of highlight it and forward it along to the board as well.
Yeah, and they're all, they're often asking for support for something, so I know I had sent you that and I see it's on the agenda.
Yep.
Do you need me here for that or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And just so you know, for the CM-RPC resignation, we're just gonna accept the resignation because there's only one more meeting before CM-RPC before the annual, before we would do appointments again. So, you stay on as alternate, essentially.
Okay, and then you're not doing anything till?
Till June, when we, like, when we do the appointments at the end of June.
Okay, so do I need to do anything?
If you want to be considered for either the full, the Select Board full-time position or, or like, full position or the alternate position, then you would have to submit a letter.
I did.
Okay.
I did a letter. Do I need anything else? I sent that to Tamika.
I think not because the CM-RPC is an outside organization.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jean?
Yes?
Just to let you know, okay, we spent two hours over there on Tuesday morning working on the sound system in there. There are some faults in that sound system that are gonna have to be worked out by Wachusett Regional School District, but we did develop a way for, to overcome it, so.
Yeah, it was much, much better.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging the sound. I was wondering, we could hear better, but I wasn't sure how it was in the.
Yeah, they only, I know that like Peter was turning on the mics for people who were talking, so we would miss the beginning of what they said if they just would raise their hand and then he could turn it on before they started, but we figured it out. It was great.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Name an address, please.
Attorney Paul Novak, three ninety-two West Boylston Street, Worcester, Massachusetts. I'm here this evening on behalf of Jay and Blake Melick with regards to Lot four N and Lot sixty-five on Wachusett Road. And I know there's a long history. You mentioned there's a history involved here. I'm not there regarding that history. I'm here specifically with regards to a permit that's been filed for before the building department and it's pending. I believe it was filed within the last week or two. And my clients purchased the lots, the two lots there, both of those lots back in January for full consideration based on the Planning Board approval, the prior approval, and an A and R plan that was on record at the Registry of Deeds. We're basically here for two reasons. One is to see if what we need to do to get those building permits issued so that they're not held up by the Building Inspector regarding another issue regarding the street. My understanding is the research I've done to date, it's a public road. I did see where you basically suspended the maintenance, which is fine. You're entitled to do that initially, but from the stance of a permit, a building permit, we basically need a building permit. They've invested significant monies here. They're in the construction phase right now. Driveway has been installed. The land lot has been cleared. They're waiting to get their foundation in. And from my understanding is they're progressing on both of these two lots that they purchased. I can't speak for the others as far as when that construction will begin, but I tend to think that given the economy right now and the need for housing, that you're probably gonna see fourteen brand-new houses there at some point. And you're gonna see all the tax revenue that's brought in through those homes. I can't tell you when, but it appears from what I've reviewed that there is a sub, not a subdivision, but there is a plan and our plan on record showing fourteen lots. So I guess the purpose for us, for me being here tonight on behalf of my clients, is to see what we need to do to get the building permit, number one. And number two, we understand that the power has to be extended down here. National Grid, they will not extend power until we get a building permit in hand. So they're coupled together, those two items. So that's my sole reason for being here, just to see what the process is from the town, what they're gonna require on behalf of my two clients.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question and for being here tonight. Austin, that's clearly a Building Department conversation. I don't have the Building Department knowledge right now here. I don't, the Building Inspector is not here, so I can't speak to that tonight.
The only, I reviewed all the notes and this is going back a few years and I think if we need to come back for a further meeting here, that we did ask the engineer who designed this and who worked with the town. There's a long history here. Back in two thousand twenty-two, it goes through a sixty-one A withdrawal. So there's a lot of stuff that he's, and I know where you have a new member. I think that maybe they should see a presentation from the engineer, Mr. Voltruba, to explain the process and where we're at at this point in time. With respect to the end meetings, I think there's notes in two thousand and twenty-two where there was a motion made to, so that they could proceed with the private build-out of the roadway and they basically did not approve that and that was in November of two thousand twenty-two. And I think the reason it wasn't approved, there wasn't any plans to start construction and at that point, it was a sixty-one A process going. You had referred it out to another woman lawyer to basically give an opinion. I'm assuming that went well because everything was finalized in that area. So back here on, with respect to the street itself, as far as what we need to do as owners of two lots to basically get the building permit issued. Once that's issued, we also have the builder here that's gonna be constructing it tonight, Mr. Mark Wild. And I believe all the plans have been submitted. It's all set to go. They're anxious with the rain we've had and everything to get going sooner than later so that they can get this moving along. I know it's costing them. They have a significant amount of equity involved with the lot purchase, also with the additional construction. So we're open to what the, you know, what you would suggest.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. And I think we've been mindful, it came before us two weeks ago, obviously, as a public comment to be added. Obviously, with the turnover, the election and turnover and stuff, we didn't feel, I didn't feel prudent to add it tonight with new board members and everything. But I appreciate you being here to ask those other questions that we can look into and when we place it on a next agenda, we'll be sure to reach out through our office.
And I'm sure, just had a conversation with the Building Commissioner this morning. He also requested to be present just to be a part of these discussions and also our town council, who I believe council has also reached out to have a discussion with as well. So I think it'd be prudent for this board to also have council present to provide a lot of that history and context from a couple of years as well.
We may be looking at an executive session for this board. I don't know how it's gonna go, but an executive session also.
Can we request respectfully a future date so that we know from a planning stance on this end for our people?
I can't give that to you tonight. We are going to reorg our board and everything tonight, so it'll be up to the new chair and we have a town administrator transition, so we'll have an acting and potentially an interim. So it's, in my mind personally, to be as quickly as reasonable for obviously everything, but.
Right. Okay, so will the Administrator be reaching out to me as far as we, what's the matter on the agenda?
Yeah, our office, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate, and you have, Tamika, you have our office. Can you just provide?
Town council does.
Okay, okay, then we'll have it through our council, through our office or council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? Name an address, please.
Karen Voltruba. I'm from J and K Ventures, the owner. I submitted a letter because I'm concerned about the maintenance and the utility easement on Wachusett Road. I'm a landowner there and it's my intention to build as soon as possible. So, again, same concerns.
Thank you. And was that the email that we received today, I believe? So I think the, um, we've received that just today, so thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else here for public comment? Austin, I see somebody on chat also. I don't know. Um, name an address, sir.
Dan Ross, five Rufus Blutton Lane. I'd like to be put on the next agenda unless you guys would like to discuss it. The town's policy for allowing the Finance Committee use of council. We would like to, we would propose that we would take a vote and we would have a majority and that we would like to ask our town council questions related to important subjects, financial subjects within the town. And we weren't given that opportunity. The Finance Committee was not given that opportunity before the annual town meeting. So I would like to either be, we can discuss it now or you guys can discuss it at your next meeting or whatever, but I have, we have a couple proposals that I think are equitable to what you guys wanna do, but that should never happen.
So for me personally, that's a future agenda item and.
Could you put us on the future agenda?
Yeah, and I would think it would be a joint, I would hope that it could be a joint meeting. Now, obviously, the board's gonna reorg, so that's gonna be at the discretion, but if it's, you know, conversation.
I just, I've looked hard and wide for a policy that states that we can't use council in questions that involve the financial issues with the town. So, we can, we don't necessarily need a joint meeting. I'm gonna be the chairman of the, I'm the acting chairman and I, I'm disappointed that we weren't able to use that, so. You put me on a future agenda? We could put the whole committee on a future agenda, but we're all pretty much lockstep.
We'll see what the new chair decides, but for me personally, right now, it's a future agenda as it would be establishing, potentially establishing policy.
Is there an actual policy stated somewhere, written down, that I can see that says I can't use? Members of the Finance Committee cannot use? Town council?
Do you have it, Austin?
So there's not a policy that says that you, Finance Committee, can't? There's an access and use of town council from boards and committees as well as town departments and the procedure is to either request directly to the Select Board or through the Town Administrator. In this instance, I made the call that I didn't feel it was appropriate to access town council for the particular question that was raised by Finance Committee. However, I did give you an option. I believe the Finance Committee exercised it at town meeting and did access town council for the particular question. So you still access town council, just not through the venue that you requested.
We didn't decide to go down that road. I just, let's have a future agenda item where it's a policy, please. Could you somehow put us on the agenda? Because that policy should not, we are the checks and balances of the financial well-being of this town and not be given access to town council is wrong. And my, the people on the Finance Committee are lockstep in that, so.
Just for the board, just to be clear, town council is appointed by the Select Board and you have the authority to decide who has access to town council. So I don't, you know, disagree with, and I respect the authority of the Finance Committee, but I believe the policy was put in place for a particular reason because of instances where boards and commissions have accessed town council without authorized use by the Select Board and the Town Administrator. So respecting your authority, but I do think that, you know, there's valid points, but there's gotta be some sort of a line there recognizing it, especially with this new budget, we have even less resources for use of town council.
And currently, the boards and commissions that have more direct access are Planning Board and Conservation that they utilize either Wetlands Protection Act for CONCOM or Planning Board Revolving Fund for those, those legal fees.
We'd just like to look at the policy.
Yep.
So, I don't think it's right.
Okay.
We'll have a debate over it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Anyone on Zoom for public comment? Austin, the chats were not relevant for public.
No, just about Zoom audio.
Um, can they not hear us or can they hear us now? Sorry.
I don't know if they can now.
Okay, sorry. All right, moving on to communications, member comments, announcements, and town administrator update. I just kind of did my member comment at the beginning, thanking everyone. Thank you all for coming and we'll have, make sure our office council reaches out.
I thought we were gonna have another record attendance.
I know.
Wow, the room is packed.
You emptied the room there.
Yeah, I emptied the room. That was me.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the attending a town meeting and the debate and conversation there as well as the participation in the election yesterday. We, I wanna thank Tom again, welcome Alex. And Austin, I believe this is probably your last meeting with us and I wanted to thank you for your time here with us and I appreciate everything that you've done for Rutland to try to bring us kind of up to a community of ten thousand, I guess. And so, thank you for everything and I wish you and your family all the best and in personal and professional. So, thank you very much. I've really enjoyed working with you the past couple of years and I've learned a lot and I have appreciated and enjoyed watching you grow as an administrator also. So I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members have any comments or?
Yes. I'd like to make a comment about this past election in terms of the town. I was amazed that there was certain people in town who use such venomous language and attack certain individuals that this is not Rutland. It doesn't work here, but they seem to think it does. And I hope for the future that any Rutland resident that sees that or comes across it speaks up to the uncharacteristic style of what Rutland is. It was very, very disappointing to see that. And I hope the individuals who did it kind of learn something of what Rutland is because apparently they may not know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public, um, board member comments? Austin, the floor is yours for Town Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for now. Several updates. You may notice, well, you may have noticed if you've accessed the wood studio, there was a hole right at the beginning of the ramp. Mark from DPW has repaired about half of the ramp with the plan. Once we get some more, well, maybe a little bit more resources in the new fiscal year to repair the rest. But just wanna thank Mark. Did a good job and that building is now accessible again. We received notification, I believe I also notified the board, received a letter of resignation from Town Planner, John Charbonneau. His last day is next Tuesday. Moving on to a tremendous opportunity for him. Wanna thank him for his, for his service. We advertised interim Town Planner position. I believe the Planning Board tonight on their agenda will be hopefully delegating two members to kind of be a search committee and interview three interim candidates to recommend for an interim position to come on board and support the Planning Board. Town Council is assisting the Clerk's Office and staff with preparation of document submissions to the state for the various bylaw articles, home rule petitions. We just received notice forwarded to the Select Board from the Clerk's Office. The election results have been certified and also sent to the Secretary of State's office. The Wachusett Regional School District Superintendent's Office will be reaching out to the Select Board to begin the process of electing or selecting the next municipal representative. Currently, Rutland Chair Whitman is the municipal representative to the School Committee, which is a position that assists with various issues, but most importantly, collective bargaining issues. I believe that Rutland is in a good position and should continue that position, but ultimately, it is selected by the chief executive officer. So it'll go to the Select Boards to elect the next municipal rep. So just to be on the lookout for that. I notified the board of my intention to designate Finance Director and Town Accountant Donna Kutcher as the acting Town Administrator during my medical leave. For employees and retirees, open enrollment is active now through the end of this month, May twenty-second. The Recreation Department Pool Service Repair Project has started. You notice contractors from Western and Sampson have started that work this week. First and foremost, they're power washing the pool surface and then we'll begin spot plaster installation of the areas of high need. Should take another week or so for that project to be complete. Wachusett Regional School District has put out to bid the Glenwood Playground Surface Repair that was approved last town meeting for sixty thousand dollars. That project, I believe bids are due by the end of this month and that project will be completed over the summer. You'll recall that the scope of that project was there's a playground directly behind Glenwood Elementary School that cannot be used for ADA purposes. The rubber in various areas is, well, it's just in terrible condition, so that playground is not active right now. So that was a project that was approved last year at town meeting. So that project will be complete. And just to close out, just wanna thank the board again for the opportunity. It's been an honor. It's been a pleasure serving the board, but also just most importantly, I was able to share comments with town staff and department heads, you know, chief among all of them and the rest of the staff. I'm just proud to have worked alongside of them, thankful for the opportunity in my time here. So just very grateful to have been here and serve alongside you as well, so. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I wanna thank John for his service to town and wish him all the best in his next adventures as well. And sorry to see him go. Austin, I think I've asked if he was amenable to doing, or asked you to reach out to see if he was amenable to doing an exit interview and I don't know if that's been completed or not, but just.
That's completed already.
So, thank you. Any other board members?
Through the chair?
Sure.
Austin, the bid process for the Glenwood Playground.
Yep.
Why was Wachusett sending out the bid?
So simply just due to the ability for easier procurement, regional school districts have easier procurement thresholds than cities and towns do. So the requirement for RFP or Invitation for Bids for cities and towns is fifty thousand dollars. For regional school district is a hundred thousand dollars. So very similar to how we completed the emergency boiler replacement. It was procured by the school district and we were sent an invoice from Wachusett School District. So after discussions with Wachusett, we believe that it was easier for the district to do the procurement and they'll send us an invoice. We have a budget for sixty thousand, so that's their hard cap. If it's over, we don't have the funding to complete that project. So that's in their bid documents, but that was the rationale there, Harry.
The reason I ask is, under the CIPC, we approve or look at things over twenty-five thousand dollars. That is an asset. Under our contract with Wachusett, I believe it's thirty-five thousand dollars. So, we're responsible for anything over thirty-five. So is my question, why didn't it come through CIPC?
It did. It did. That was one of the projects that was on the capital plan last year and went to town meeting last year.
I thought that was, the playground was taken care of under ADA. Am I looking at something else?
No. That was, that was last year, so not, not the most recent annual town meeting, Harry. That was twenty twenty-four annual town meeting.
Okay.
So that was the same town meeting that we did, the two facilities vans.
Okay, yep, I got it. Right.
There was, you know, I can't remember all the projects off the top of my head, but.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. Was that Minnie?
Minnie, Minnie.
Yeah.
Minnie likes six thirty-eight.
So just, I mean, that'll be probably poured in place rubber, very similar to what was done behind Naqwaq from Safe Place. That was grant funded. So maybe you're thinking of the, of that project?
No, it was still done there.
But yeah, so yeah, Glenwood was, funding was approved. I believe we used a little bit of capital stabilization and some free cash to pay for that project.
Any other questions or comments for Austin? Hearing none. We have appointments and resignations. We have a letter of resignation from Tim Narwald. He was our full Select Board delegate to CM-RPC. This is just one of those formalities that the board just, this resignation is submitted to Town Clerk and certified and then the board just needs to essentially rubber stamp it. We don't really have any recourse. We can't force someone to stay on something that they don't wanna stay on. If you recall, we had recently appointed Tim and Jean to fill the full and alternate. And given that there's one more CM-RPC meeting before the end of June and we still have, the Select Board has an alternate that could fulfill our Select Board piece, I didn't feel comfortable accepting a resignation and an appointment in the same, same thing because, so.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion to accept Tim's resignation from CM-RPC. Um, I would entertain a motion to accept, um, Tim's resignation from CMRPC as a select board delegate.
I, uh, I move to accept the resignation of Tim Narwell at the, on the select board deli- as the select board at CMRPC, regretfully.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, roll call, Harry?
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Ledger I.
Mo and I.
Whitman I, with regrets. Thank you, Tim, for, for serving on that, um, and bringing back some of the ideas. Um, I don't believe we have any old business, um, moving into new business. We have the reorganization of the board. Um, we have election of board officers, chair, vice chair and clerk. Um, so, is there?
I move to, uh, appoint Jen Ledger as chair.
Is there a second? I would second. Is there conversation? Roll call, Harry?
Uh, second and nay?
Matt's and nay.
Ledger I.
Mo and I.
Whitman I. Jen?
I'm passing.
Cavalry of authority.
Jen, it's you for the vice chair and proclaiming here, okay? Um, then I will, uh, move on to vice chair. Is there any motion for vice chair?
I would move to nominate Paul Matson as vice chair.
Second.
There's a motion, oh, sorry, Jen? Sorry, it's gonna take me, take me a minute to do this.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, Harry?
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Ledger I.
Mo and I.
Whitman I.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, and moving into clerk, is there, uh, a motion for nomination for clerk? Um, I will make a motion to nominate Leah for the position of clerk.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, uh, roll call, Harry?
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Ledger I.
Mo and I.
Whitman I.
We have our newly reorganized board, myself as chair, uh, Paul as our vice chair and Leah as clerk. Right, any other discussion on that topic? Um, I might need a little bit of help here, Austin, on the agenda, since I don't have all the history behind it, but moving into the parking services intermunicipal agreement.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, it's easy, there's no change there. Um, so you're saying that and not looking up. Um, so this is, uh, in IMA, we have Police Chief Monaco. Um, the chief, uh, I think has been finding ways to, uh, to innovate some of the services that are provided from the police department. You know, recent examples, animal control, for example. Um, this was a, a unique opportunity that was brought up by the chief a few weeks ago, um, for an intermunicipal agreement with Plymouth County Commissioners for parking services. And I'll turn it over to the chief to explain what that is, what their agreement is and, and the services that would be, be provided, uh, which I fully support, uh, the chief's proposal.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for having me tonight. Um, it's, it's funny how this came about. Probably two years ago, I got a flyer in the mail from Plymouth County offering a regional parking service, parking ticket management service. And my first instinct was to probably just throw it away, cause, uh, it was kind of, it was strange. But, but it looked interesting enough, I, I put it in a drawer in my desk, just to, to sit there. Um, and like Austin said, this came up a few weeks ago. Um, one of my officers came to me and said, hey, chief, we're just about out of parking tickets. I said, all right, I'll, I'll order some more tickets. So, uh, have Jackie find what, we, it's been so long since we ordered tickets. She found who we ordered them from, we found the invoice. It was over seven hundred dollars to buy parking tickets and that was over ten years ago. Um, so I said, you know what, let me, let me see if I still have that flyer from Plymouth County. So I, I found the flyer from Plymouth County, I reached out and, um, what they do is they offer a, a parking ticket management service, run through them, um, and they actually, they offer it to a, well, they're currently performing it for forty-two different, different government entities. Um, twenty Plymouth County towns and then nineteen other municipalities that range from the Berkshires to the Cape. Uh, plus two university campus police departments and the MBTA transit police. Um, so I had a Zoom meeting with the, um, with the manager. And basically what, the benefit to us is it's, um, you know, it's increased efficiency for our officers. Um, we can actually transition to an e-ticket system, which is the same thing we're doing for traffic citations right now. We can print them off our already existing, uh, laptops and printers that we have in the cars. So there's no need to purchase any equipment, there's no need to purchase any, any ticket books. Um, it's better, it's more user friendly for the public because if they get their ticket, they can go online within twenty-four hours and pay it, um, and it's done. And, uh, it's easy for us to track. We can go online anytime and look at the list and see what's outstanding. And they also do the, um, do the non-renewal program with the registry. And I don't, I don't think our town clerk's office has ever set that up, where if we have unpaid tickets. So if we have an unpaid ticket, it's supposed to get reported to the registry of motor vehicles. They tag it onto your registration renewal. So when you go to renew your registration, they pay that fee and that fee ultimately comes back to the town. Uh, we would still retain our local parking clerk, but, um, she wouldn't have to manage tickets and payments anymore. All she would have to deal with is appeals. Um, so, and she, she was very happy to hear that and actually offered up her small stipend to donate to the, uh, Fourth of July Committee. So, as far as costs go, it's, um, it's two dollars per ticket. So if we issue a ticket, the, uh, let's say the, the winter parking ban, the fine is twenty dollars. Plymouth will collect the fee and then they will send us remittance of eighteen dollars. So there's no billing, they just take the fee out of the, uh, the remittance. Um, it's an extra fifty cents if they have to send a second notice. So ultimately, we end up saving money, um, and streamlining the process, so. I, I think it's a pretty good program and we're interested in moving forward with it.
Through the chair, I have a question, please.
Um, um, give me.
Yeah, it's gonna take me a little bit.
Um, I, thanking, um, Chief Monaco for bringing this forward, I appreciate that. Um, are the, r- sorry, remind me, are the, ti- are the fines, are we, do we set the fines? Or are they per MGL or does it depend?
We, we set the fines, but they fall within a range within MGL. And that's actually something that came up when I talked to the, uh, the manager there. So our, currently our handicap parking fine is a hundred dollars. We could potentially go up to three hundred dollars. So that's something, I mean, we should probably review at some point and maybe look at updating some of those.
Yeah.
But, um, to, to get on boarded, all I have to do is send him, well, I have, you know, if you sign the IMA, send that, um, send our towns' traffic rules and regs and a copy of our current citation so that way they can enter it into the computer system to create the e-citation.
And may I have a follow-up? If, it's not an issue to update, like if the board were to update the, the fine, the fee schedule or the fine schedule, it wouldn't be an issue to, to send that along to them?
Nope, we'd just send it along and they'd, they'd update the system, yeah.
That, that was my question too, would, would that be a, a change to the IMA or is it just a?
No, I think, I think that, that's included. Um, also, it, it gives us the opportunity for expansion. I, I know we don't, you just asked about parking meters. We don't have parking meters and I, I don't expect them in the near future, but hypothetically, if there was some major, you know, center of town redevelopment with, with more parking and like a pay-to-park system or it's that, they can integrate those systems into their system, so.
Awesome.
Through the chair?
Please.
How many tickets basically do we issue a year?
Less than a hundred.
Less than a hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So it's not, it's not a massive amount. It's, um, it's usually winter parking ban and that'll go for a few weeks and then people start getting the idea of, oh, I can't park around the street anymore. Um, you know, we'll get, we'll get a sprinkling of, uh, handicap tickets throughout the year and a couple at the baseball field, people park in the wrong way and stuff, so.
As a follow-up, how much time does it take to issue a hundred tickets a year versus the system you're talking about?
Oh, I, I mean, it'd probably take an officer on paper five, five minutes or so, but this, this will cut it down to a minute to punch it in the computer, print it out, put it on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Plus the ticket books always, they, you know, they, they get lost, they fall under the seat and, you know. So this, they'll always be ready to go. It's just a, it's a web-based, uh, program, so they sign in, they can just type in the info and print it out.
Do we have a lot of tickets that are unpaid?
Uh, I checked with the parking clerk, we currently have three.
Three?
Yes, so.
Okay.
It's not, it's not outrageous. Um, and you'll notice in IMA that they'll actually take on the, um, the unpaid tickets and work on collections for those.
Okay, all right, which you do now, I mean, through your, through your.
Well, yeah, the parking clerk takes care of it.
The parking clerk does, so that would free her up to.
Yes.
And who's the parking clerk now?
Corinne Pulefico.
Okay. Okay.
Um, is there a length, a term length for the IMA?
Um, there's, there's no length, I think it's perpetual, but we can terminate with a thirty-day list.
With a thirty days, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, um, are there any competitors that do something similar that you found through this or?
I, I haven't, um, when I talked to the director in Plymouth, he said there are private companies that manage it, but most municipalities that sign on with the private companies end up getting, uh, getting dumped because they're too small. Um, so, you know, you fall within the cracks and then they just stop servicing you, so.
Yeah, this is, this is like, you know, another really good example of regionalized services that, you know, they've done very well down here and I think we'll be the first in the area to use this.
Yeah, in, yeah, in central Mass. There's, there's towns to the west doing it and there's towns to the east, so we'd be right in the middle. Plus they have a, uh, they have a full service, customer service Monday through Friday, Friday, um, you know, open eight to four every day, phone calls, emails, so anybody has questions.
Any other questions? I'm, oh, go ahead.
Okay, so, are you recommending that we should approve this for you?
I am.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement for the parking services with the county of Plymouth, Mass, Plymouth, Plymouth, Mass, effective May first twenty.
Plymouth County.
Plymouth County. Um, yeah, Plymouth County Parking System. To keep, um, effective.
Plymouth County Parking Department.
Effective May first, twenty twenty-five. So we're posted.
All right, any other?
Second emotion?
Alex seconded.
Oh, he did.
Okay.
All good.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call, Harry?
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Ledger I.
Mo and I.
Whitman I.
All right, thank you.
Go wait, more tickets.
We'll start right now.
Test with you first, I mean. Use the rec, no.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, um, moving into next item, CMRPC letter of support for local technical assistance hours. Does anybody have the info on this?
Yeah, uh, this is, uh, a request, um, from Central Mass Planning Commission. It was also, I believe, forwarded from, uh, from Jean. Um, CMRPC, uh, all of the planning commissions are looking for letters of support from local, um, communities, uh, to support increased funding for the district local technical assistance line item in the state budget. Um, so this, uh, would, uh, be sent to our state legislative delegation, um, supporting, uh, increased line item, or increased funding in that line item for D L T A assistance. The, the D L T A program provides, um, essential support for regional planning commissions to do a lot of the work that you've probably seen either, uh, occur in Rutland or in the area. Um, this pretty much supports staff hours and programs and services for the regional planning commissions to continue that work. And this is, you'll probably see this every year, this is an annual state budget. One of those things that's easy to cut in state budgets, so, uh, the regional planning commissions do a lot of advocacy right around this time to ensure that that's, doesn't occur.
I'll entertain a motion to send a letter of support to our legislative representatives advocating for the funding of district local technical assistance.
So.
Second. Any discussion, questions? All right, roll call, Harry?
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Ledger I.
Mo and I.
Whitman I.
Um, moving into item D, interim town administrator discussing next steps for process. I believe at our last meeting, we had, um, requested that Austin bring forward two candidates for review and consideration by the board. Is that where we're at for discussion for today?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, um, so, uh, after, uh, providing my notice, um, of resignation, we advertised, uh, for an interim town administrator position, uh, on the Mass Municipal Association. Uh, we received nine, um, applicants, uh, one internal applicant, um, within that nine for an interim town administrator position. I forwarded to the board after a public records request, all nine submissions, um, for the board to have access to, uh, those candidates. Um, so in, in this case, I, I believe that because you have access to all nine, I, I'm seeking the board's guidance about next steps for how you want to proceed. Um, I respectfully felt that it was inappropriate, um, at this time for me to advance a candidate when you have access to all nine. Um, so, I believe, um, with exception to Alex, I, I sent him the, uh, the list of resumes this morning after his email was created. Um, you now have access or you've had access to those for several days now, so, um, perhaps just in the respect of confidentiality for these candidates, if, if you do intend on discussing these, I would encourage you not to, uh, talk about their names in public. Maybe you can use initials or, you know, some other mechanism to be able to discuss these candidates if you want to proceed with, um, you know, for example, bringing someone forward, um, for an interview or consideration. Um, one thing that also could be for consideration is very similar to what the planning board will be doing tonight, um, is delegating maybe two members to serve as a, um, interview or, or selection committee to bring forward either one or two candidates, uh, amongst yourselves now that you have a newly seated board. Um, but, uh, that, uh, has been the process thus far and seeking any discussion or further guidance as the board is fit.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, read a statement that I, um, have prepared with regards to the public records request. Um, trying to, uh, make sure that the board understands that I was not looking to change the process of what we had discussed at our meeting with reviewing two candidates that were recommended by the town administrator. I was seeking information to have for myself to understand who was applying and be able to see who the town administrator was recommending and what he felt their qualifications were compared to all the candidates that had replied. I did not have any intention of changing that, it was from my own knowledge. Um, so I just wanted to read the statement that I had made, that I drafted. With regards to finding an interim town administrator and then the future of permanent town administrator, my intent was not and will never be to circumvent the process. As a member of the select board, I have a duty to the town and the staff to ensure that we find a town administrator who I believe is a good fit for Rutland. In my opinion, any TA selected interim or otherwise should be a board decision and not the decision of an outgoing town administrator. As a member of the board, I wanted to have all information available that I felt necessary to assist in this process. That includes access to the potential candidates to review their interest, background and qualifications in addition to the recommendation of the current town administrator and feedback from other members of the board. Speaking more generally, I feel there's been a lack of transparency with regards to information sharing, both with the board and residents. Requesting information to review does not equal micromanaging. It allows me to be educated as a board member, to be able to ask informed questions and make informed decisions. While I may not be involved with the day-to-day operations and have no desire to be, I still have a duty to the residents and staff to have an understanding of what's going on in the town. Asking questions, requesting information and expressing concern are part of the job and I'll continue to these actions as I feel necessary to fulfill my obligations as a select board member. So I just wanted to read that, um, again, it was never my intention and I wasn't insinuating that we change what was discussed. Um, it was simply from my own knowledge and information and that's all. And I even replied in that, that I still expected to be presented with two candidates for discussion for tonight's meeting, so. Is there any discussion or questions as far as next steps that the board would like to see?
I, I guess i- if we follow the process, Austin, I'd be looking at what were two candidates that you recommended, that you would recommend?
Yeah, and now, and, and especially even after, um, with respect, uh, to the chair's statement, it, it's also clear from the comments in that statement that it's, um, my recommendation ultimately doesn't matter. You wanted to review all nine credentials, now the whole board has all nine. Um, so with respect, I, I don't feel comfortable mentioning the names in public. Um, my recommendation, you know, intent was to come in the form of a memo with my thoughts for the. Um, my recommendation, you know, intent was to come in the form of a memo with my thoughts for the two candidates and their credentials. But again, I I I, even though and I do respect the chair's comments, that you you don't feel like y- your intent was to change the process just by the nature of it, especially through, it was formally requested through your 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 official email. I felt it was uh inappropriate to send it directly to you without letting the rest of the board have access to that information. So, um, that's why I I I feel really uncomfortable, this is kind of awkward, um, to kind of be in this dynamic with the board because I really wanted to make this an easy process. Um, but again, just respectfully, Harry, I I don't feel comfortable. I think it's pretty clear by looking at the resumes, you can see who has the most experience
Right.
um, and probably would serve best as an interim, so, um, and I do agree and respect, um, Jen, your comments, um, that it should be the board's decision. I think it's pretty clear from the resumes, probably it would be the best. Um, and if you have any particular questions as a follow-up, to be happy and answer those two about the candidates.
I'm not sure how far we can go with questions, if we don't want to mention their names or get into their personal stuff.
Well, just remember, I guess, your initial guidance, right? Your initial guidance was you were looking for someone with M C P P O and procurement certification.
Yeah.
Uh, you were looking for someone who, um, it appears to have either previous town manager or town administrator experience uh or H R, I think, was the kind of the comments um from from Jen, so, um, you know, of those candidates, I think there's very clearly one particular candidate, um, that has the most experience, has served not only as a town manager, town administrator, but also has served in interim roles. Um, so without saying that candidate's name, that was going to be the one that I I recommended and that's why I um made the, you know, why I was asking for directions via email from the board about it, would you be okay if I if I recommend it just one? Uh, because I do feel that that individual was the strongest candidate. Um, I've spoken with that individual several times, um, they were willing to be here tonight, um, to speak with you. Um, and they are available to serve, uh, not only to close out the fiscal year, working with town staff, but also, most importantly, to assist this board with whatever process you choose. That's probably one of their most important roles is to assist this board, uh, with the process of selecting your next permanent administrator.
Um, okay, thank you, Austin. I guess, um, maybe I'll start if that's okay. I I guess the two that I I look at, there, e- everyone has a certain amount of qualifications to it. I saw there were things of one, some of that are on another, but I think the two most qualified that I can find, I'm just gonna say it's a a G A and a D D are my two, that I thought were the most qualified, with possibly the D D being first.
G what?
Huh?
G what?
G A, uh, G E, yeah.
Sir, I don't, Jen, I don't know how you wanna do this. I I was frustrated by the process, I think, generally, historically, um, not just in town, but kind of best practice across the state has been, uh, outgoing TA in good standing, um, provides a a candidate and then there was a lot of back and forth, um, so I was a little bit frustrated by that process. Um, respectfully, uh, understand, um, the concerns of some of the other members as well. Um, for me, uh, Harry, similar to you, D D is my top choice, um, far and wide. Um, and I think it would be difficult for me to go with a second. Um, I would have to really look a little bit more closely.
Paul or Alex, honey?
Yeah, I mean, having limited time to look through it, um, I took a little look earlier today, but this is, you know, the second time I've looked at it and maybe ten minutes total. Um, uh, the D D was obviously, you know, high up there. Um, the grant piece is obviously a nice touch to add that in.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Trying to. I think it's. The J R was, um, rather local as well. Oh, maybe not, maybe not living local, never mind, worked local, but didn't live local, never mind.
Paul, honey?
I have to recuse myself because I don't have any of the apps.
Of the applications?
Yeah.
They were.
You want to see some?
They were emailed and I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, this is the, she, this seems to be the one that everybody's going one for, so, take a look at that, I guess.
Speaking for myself, D D was also the one that stood out to me, um, as well. I I do feel I would be remiss and and I I realize that the candidate doesn't have some of the qualifications that we were looking for, but I feel I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the internal candidate, um, is offering to perform the role at a significantly reduced um salary, given our financial circumstances and the potential for needing to hire a firm for whatever we decide to do for a permanent TA. Uh, I just wanted to to put that out there as well, but, um, again, for as far as the candidates go, um, D D was also my
Okay.
my first as well.
Is there any other thoughts as far as what the board would like to see for next steps?
Can you mention some of the conversation you had with him, Austin?
Yeah, um, so I've had, uh, two or three conversations with him. Um, first and foremost, what general availability is and, um, experience and, you know, the the thoughts, especially from an interim candidate. Um, I believe this individual is retired, so, you know, not uh not looking to be a a long timer here, but again, most important function is to, um, start the ground running and and make sure, or hit the ground running and make sure uh to support the board, um, and get clear process, um, decisions for how you want to proceed with your permanent search. Um, so as you know, or I think was mentioned, you know, there's a couple of options here. I think we've exercised both of them in the past, whether it's a a search firm or a a search committee. Um, and, uh, we talked a little bit about that, what the the timeline for something like that. It can be really whatever works for this board. Um, he, you know, explicitly mentioned there was a one particular community that, you know, they thought maybe it was gonna be about seven months and the board wanted to take more time and it took about a year, so he's he's comfortable with that, um, uh, in terms of whatever works for the board. But, um, most important role is to assist you guys, uh, in advancing this. Uh, will be, you know, the main contact on behalf of the board if you do, uh, with a search firm. Um, he's worked with all of the search firms that, uh, do a lot of this work. Um, and then also recognizing where we are in terms of closing out one year and starting the other. Um, as you can see, he has a lot of experience in all of those roles, so he's comfortable with, uh, with with closing out and supporting the board, attending as many, uh, meetings of the board and other boards and committees as needed um, and supporting staff as well. So those were the main conversations, um, and then, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, hypothetically, what what figures look like for, um, for his services and, um, you know, obviously, this individual would not be taking benefits, so, you know, taking all that in mind, a typical rate for, uh, for an interim kind of falls in line with, uh, probably what you're paying me plus my benefits. Um, uh, and actually, uh, depending on the hours of expectations that you have or negotiate with this individual, you'll be right in line with what you're you're paying me every two weeks anyways, so. Um, I mentioned our budget situation and and when talking about the rate discussion, you know, one of the things that I thought was really nice to hear, you saw some other letters that were pretty clear, uh, about their rate. Um, you know, willing to work with the board about, you know, whatever your preferred budget is as well. So, um, something I think that was nice to hear, um, given our sensitive budget issues, closing out when you're starting another.
If I may, do you have a sense, Austin, from speaking with the individuals, um, that they, um, cause previous interns, some have been full-time here and, um, some have been kind of much reduced hours. Um, did you have a sense that this individual was strict on reduced hours or kind of more willing to work with the board and and the town's needs?
Yeah, so this, uh, so conversations with all the individuals, you'll see some individuals are maybe in a little bit of a different position, so they'd be more willing and able to work full-time. Um, but this particular individual that we're talking about, um, I mentioned, you know, I believe he is retired. Um, but I, you know, I mentioned that we're only open to the public forty days a week anyways, so, um, uh, it appeared to be, you know, comfortable with matching those hours, but again, subject to, um, negotiations with the board and whatever you decide, um, makes sense. So I think our building hours now are thirty-four hours, so, um, he's aware of that.
So as far as, uh, I guess, leaving the candidate out for a minute, as far as next steps, do we feel that we need to discuss potential terms for or, um, role responsibilities if they're not going to end up being full-time? Like, what sort of discussion do we need to have as far as responsibilities and what we'd be looking for?
Yeah, so I can forward you guys from the Mass Municipal, it's very simple, um, you know, the luckily for an interim contract, you don't need as much um, because, uh, you know, there's not benefits and everything else that you're offering. So, um, there is a model contract, uh, that most, if not all, interim or acting administrators use. Uh, that would be my recommended agreement, obviously make sure you run it by town council. Um, uh, but that directly comes from, uh, the Mass Municipal Association, so that's something that I can forward for you to have. Um, and then it's simple enough that it's kind of just plug and play, so you, um, you're not gonna offer any benefits, right? So, you're gonna put in the individual's name, uh, contact information and their rate, and that's pretty much it for an interim agreement. So, um, it kind of makes it, I, you know, hopefully easy for you, um, upon your final decision if you want to bring this individual on board or not.
Would, i- if I may, would you recommend, Austin, kind of, um, delegating maybe two members to, um, if you, the two members are willing to reach out to the individual and and confirm still interest and, um, work on contract negotiations um, outside of a a meet, obviously then it would come together to to sign and and execute the contract or, um, kind of with some framework as far as as many hours as the person can give or we, the board only wants twenty out, whatever the board decides? Um, would you recommend that?
Yeah.
To keep the process moving or?
Yeah, very similar to kind of maybe what we, I I think that's a great path. Um, similar to what we do with collective bargaining, right? I kind of ask you guys for a framework and then we try to work within that, so, um, I think that's not a bad idea to especially keep things moving. So if you wanna, you know, delegate a team of two to to reach out to the individual, have a conversation and work out a deal and then, um, I do think it would be a good opportunity for the board, uh, you know, upon doing that, have this individual come in and chat with you and then if still everyone feels comfortable, you can execute that agreement that's been probably vetted by council and everything else at that point, so. Um, I think, but again, if you delegate a lot of that negotiating work to a team, you know, make it a little bit smoother.
Any thoughts on that?
I I mean, if if that's where the board wants to go for two, I, um, I think I'd like to be one of those two or getting into the beginning aspects of it, bringing that back to the board then.
Has anybody have any concerns with with two? Does anybody feel it should be more than?
I think two, just a. If if I may, if it's more than two, then it has to be pub- posted as a public meeting.
Right.
Um, and so I think the intent of having two is just so that it's not the to be able to be.
Or we do that internally and take it back, okay.
I think, I don't know.
Okay. Right, um, Harry, you've expressed interest, is anybody else interested?
Yeah, come on, guys, gotta be two of us here.
I mean, I would do it, but I don't feel like I need to do it either, so, I, Jenna's chair, I don't know if you are interested, um, or whatever.
Well, I I guess the question of the board is, do we really need to do that? Do we need two people to reach out?
I don't know if we need two to reach out, but.
That you go through and talk to him about contracts and what he's looking for and all that kind of thing.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Are you, are we comfortable?
If if you feel, maybe, so I can reach out for you
Okay.
and provide both of you their contact information and then however you want to do it, you can coordinate, whether it's a meeting, coffee, whatever, to have that meeting in or negotiation. Um, cause I agree, it would be kind of awkward to have like two different people reaching out, so I I don't mind being the the first contact and letting them know that, um, they will be hearing from one of you to schedule a meeting or something, so, if that makes sense, but.
And Jen, I was just thinking as chair, that you would be working kind of more closely with the individual, so it might make sense for you to have that a for, uh, initial, be involved in that initial first meeting and everything.
Right.
And Harry, I'm happy if you do it too, that's totally.
Well, I'd be willing to work with Harry if you're looking for a second person to help out.
Okay. Um, so I just want to make sure I have what we're thinking about here. Austin, reaching out, so I guess, let me ask this question, or is the board in agreement on a candidate that we would like to reach out to, to take the next steps with?
I'm gonna say yes on on D D for me.
Okay.
Paul?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Everybody's in agreement, okay.
And I would guess if we're all in agreement on that, and since that person is what seems like not working, it almost feels like they could just come in tall five and kind of skip that, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I mean.
I think building the framework, to your point, coming up with the framework and saying, here's what the expectation is, and then you can work with them on the framework and say, you know, here's what the board wants, is this within what you're looking for? And if it is, then they just come to all five and we skip that process, cause it almost seems like with that individual, it might be unnecessary. If it was somebody who is currently working and and would have to leave a job, but that's, I could see a little bit more.
So without, um, getting, do you have maybe, is there a consensus of the board of a rough framework? Um, and maybe it's everything I just mentioned in terms of matching building hours, keeping the rate around typically what you have for me plus benefits, uh, or plus what the rate of benefits would be. It sounds like that may be a rough framework right there.
Whoa.
And then we, I could.
How many, how many days a week is he willing?
Well, it's kind of like the the hours, I think, is, you know, what you'd be expecting. I I I don't think it's unreasonable to ask, maybe just to to match the building hours or close to it, um, if possible, right? We're, you know, we're closed on Fridays. I technically don't have to work on Fridays, but I do, cause it's quiet and no one's there, right? So, um.
But then we would, like, if they came, if they came to a board meeting, any other board meetings, then we'd be paying for them.
Uh.
So.
No, so, the individual also kind of, I, we we talked about that, right? Like, how mindful of your hours, um, you know, are are you leaving exactly, let's say it was twenty-seven hours, are you leaving exactly after twenty-seven hours? Uh, and the answer was no. Um, and you're not getting a bill for, like lawyers, you're getting, you're paying for every phone call or anything, right?
I was just gonna say, are we looking at a salary here versus an hourly?
Uh, so, you know, typically the works, way it works is is typically, it's kind of just like a flat, you know, let's say, just giving easy numbers, a thousand dollars a week.
Okay.
Right, um, so for the services of providing, of being the interim administrator, um, for X hours, everything else, you're paying them a certain rate per week, kind of how that works.
Okay.
And if I may, in if I may, in the past, I think the intern would attend, obviously, select more meetings and if there were other meetings that, um, I know, Austin, you've been involved with some stuff with, um, R D I C recently and everything, um, but other things that kind of are in the midst of needing a town administrator, but it wasn't the expectation that they may be the the liaison for all of the other boards and commissions that sometimes, um, the town administrator is requested to attend, but not needed to attend, right? Like, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Obviously, if we get it to budget, to times, that would be a a much bigger need and maybe that person is amenable to increase their hours if we get to that point and still have them, maybe that's the path forward there.
Um, would those hours include, uh, events or meetings he has to go to for the town?
Um.
Like, you do some special meetings to?
Yeah, I mean, you, an intern's probably not gonna go to a a ribbon cutting or
You don't mean that.
economic development, social, or things like that, right? I mean, um, you know, they'll, if we were in budget season, for example, yes, they would go to the finance committee meetings and C F B C meetings and, um, you know, kind of the critical functions and then, um, you know, if there is something that requires, uh, the administrator on behalf of the board to attend, and I'm just thinking, for example, maybe it's a planning board issue.
Yeah.
Um, it's not uncommon to see an intern attend those two, but.
I'm thinking in terms of, let's say he works twenty-seven hours a week, do those hours be part of the twenty-seven or would that be something that he would do after the twenty?
Uh, yeah, so I think we kind of just discussed that a little bit, just in terms of what the expectations are. This particular individual mentioned that, again, um, you know, let's say, for example, Again, um you know, let's say, for example, we had a a marathon of a meeting tonight, um. Recognizing there's still work to do, you're not gonna find them all of a sudden leaving early on Wednesday or something to uh. Be mindful or counting their hours per se.
So we're potentially looking at building hours four days, Monday through Thursday, and then designated meetings as needed?
Yeah, definitely, I would say, I mean, obviously, t- for me, definitely select board, and then the extras as needed, um FinCom. Um if, you know, right, it's needed, but.
I mean, obviously, planning board, depending on how quickly an interim gets in there, or if the role, where that role is, they might need more. Um attendance as well, I don't know if it would, but it just, I feel like that's a whole for a bit.
Yeah, okay. Um and then as far as rate, do we need to come up with the rate per week, or do we just, as you said, just come measure it with what your current compensation is with?
I mean, it just by initial conversation, well, it sounds like it's it's within that range anyway, so um. Yeah, so as long as the board's comfortable with that, um I think we'd be fine there.
So then, if, sorry, if I may, are that we then, is the board then more amenable or more thinking of going to just um? Kind of skipping the that initial screening and just inviting the candidate in at at for our next board meeting and potentially an executive session to negotiate contract. And and sign, um is that the?
It seems like, uh and again, I'll please, but it seems like everybody's on the same page with the candidate as well as the. At least the initial terms and hours that we'd be looking for, so I I don't see any concern with inviting them back for the next meeting to discuss and then.
Do we wanna wait that long? Do we wanna wait two weeks? When we could call a special meeting and bring him in?
We have to do do the initial interview in open session, and then it's, is it just a contract portion for executive?
Yeah, so the unfortunately, um it's only screening committees that can do uh in executive session, the um the interview, so that would have to be. Um that would have to be in public, but the the contract negotiation could be in executive session. Then obviously executing that contract would have to be back in public session.
Okay, um and then did, I'm sorry, did they state as far as when they could start? Do they have a media available?
Uh I told them, you know, kind of when I'm leaving in my timeline, and they were comfortable with that, so I think it's subject to.
Okay.
Whatever works for you guys too.
And what, how does the board feel, do we feel we wanna do it more than in within the two weeks, or I mean, we have Donna as acting T A in the interim?
For me personally, the next couple of weeks are kind of crazy.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, I I would think that the question is, is there anything in the next two weeks that is of concern that?
We couldn't wait.
That is, you know, top of mind, that's concerning, that we can't wait.
Uh I, you know, not that can't be handled um by Donna, and obviously I mentioned that I'm. You know, not very far away, and there's some things that I'm handling too, so um I've mentioned that to departments as well, and to you guys, if there's assistance you need. I can handle, especially some of the big things that is pressing, uh but to answer your question, Alex, don't.
Okay.
Um hopefully, uh the the individual is is maybe at least on boarded or selected. Before the end of the fiscal year, so your town accountant can spend their full attention and effort closing out the fiscal year, um the finance team as well, just. Um getting there.
We know that Paxton and another town are looking for administrators or temporary to get in. Is this individual being coordinated by other?
Uh so I know that they're not the interim and Barry, because they've already selected one.
Alright.
Um and I don't believe that Paxton has had a discussion or decision about an interim. Yet, I think they've kind of set like a job advertisement a while, but they have not um selected anyone, so. I think that's also obviously the timeline is we wanna get someone on board before someone else stacks them too, right?
That was, that was my concern about meeting for two weeks.
Well, but if we at least reach out and and get it on the the books, then there's.
I could call on the way home.
And tell me that we're looking at him seriously.
Yep, can do that.
Alright, so um I will entertain a motion for, do it, how do I do it? To authorize Austin to reach out to candidate D D to invite them to the May twenty-seventh. Select board meeting for a discussion with the select board for interim administrator position.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, I'll call Harry.
That's an idea.
I dry.
Why would I?
Wait, my eye. Anything else right now for interim town administrator? Um any future agenda requests?
Jen, if it's okay with you, I have a few kind of that we we you heard about the Watcher's at Road staff, um and the um. What was the other one, uh uh FinCom thing, um so those are kind of, and I don't. Remember if there's anything else kind of on the radar.
Yeah, I went for you, just your um your answer, you don't need to change the rates for stormwater, um but. Uh working and and I'll have um a recommendation um from the finance team as well for. Um the water sewer rates and what those will look like.
So we.
So just.
We'll need to set the water sewer rates?
Not at the next meeting, but um one of the meetings in June, I suggest.
Okay.
And if I may ask to start putting out the call broadly for um vacancies for boards and committees and commissions, um. I think the board, the past couple iterations has tried to move away from the assumption that it's an automatic reappointment. And just so put out that these are the openings, and if you, um whether you're interested in reappointment or or not, that they, it's the same process. For for me personally.
I think you you did that a little bit ago, right?
So I've already emailed all the boards and committees, um I also, there's a social media post pending tomorrow as well as email blast. It's also up on um the electronic sign, so we are definitely getting the word out that we have vacancies, and we're advertising them for. All the positions on the assumption that it's not necessarily an automatic reappointment, I've already started hearing back from some folks that they are not seeking reappointment, so I'm making. Note of that, so you guys will know, have that information as well, so we're getting it out there.
Okay, and then we'll do that, what would, what did you say, June twenty-third meeting, we're looking to try and do?
I'm trying to push it to that last meeting, just so we can get as many people as possible, um yeah, so I set a cutoff date of June eighteenth, so I could have everything to you guys. Ahead of the meeting for you to review.
Okay, yeah.
Uh I have had several citizens reach out to me from Saint Patrick's about the crossover. Between the parking lot and Saint Patrick's or people, and what's the status, what's going on? So I don't know if it's agenda item, or you can talk about it.
I can answer to that, so we did um have that discussion with Mass D O T when they were um kind of doing their punch list, um they. Um rejected the proposal or the request from the town to um paint a crosswalk because of ADA concerns. Um I think that's something that the town should have uh maybe requested during the design phase or during active construction. Um there are D O T traffic issues with installing a crosswalk that is not um. ADA compliant, so you think of like the, I can't remember what it's called, but the the ridge is at the bottom of it.
Yeah.
Um installing a crosswalk, um especially if there um was a pedestrian strike in a crosswalk. Um there was concerns from D O T um that were later agreed upon by D P W that there could potentially be a live voting issue there. Um so um I think this is something that we'll just have to do a little bit more education for people. Uh that of the of the crosswalks that are in the area, and then maybe just working with the church for them to use their parking lot. And parking space is down by Century Oil, um cuz I do notice that there's not a lot of people that use that lower lot, and I get why, right, it's convenience thing, but. Um from a live.
Where you don't have a lot of handicap parking spaces.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
But I did notice that they use cones there now.
Yeah, I did see that.
On the center line to kind of give people ideas across walk.
Yeah, certainly something if if um if the town and the board want to, you know, maybe um. Pursue an ADA grant or something to to modify an intersection there that um work with D P W and. Uh consulting engineer to design something, but um you maybe could probably use a little bit of chapter ninety for something like that too, but. Um unfortunately, you know, the the free crosswalk from D O T was was rejected, at least we got a parking lot out of it.
I don't, I don't, no, I don't necessarily think they wanted it, cuz their problems were at night with the lights too.
Yeah.
So um nothing has been done, so that's why they asked me to see what.
Yep, we tried, but unfortunately.
That, but maybe there's some other things D P K, D P W can do or something, another light they can install, but is that a Verizon issue, I mean a. Uh a light issue, electric issue?
Uh yeah, I'm not sure in the area, Harry, where the closest street light is, but um.
It's right there in front of the church.
Is there, it's just not bright enough?
No, it's not bright enough.
Okay, alright.
So.
Well, and we're reducing our streetlights budget next year, so.
Um.
We didn't.
I said we.
We.
The town did, right?
Okay.
Yeah, but unfortunately, not good news from D O T on that.
What would there be, would there be an issue with the church putting on its own um on the pole, kind of like lower? You know, a sense light that comes on and off, cuz I know when traffic goes by, it'll come on.
If I may.
When you walk, huh?
I from when the three hundredth was trying to do um the pole, the banners and everything on the poles, you have to get um. Uh authorization, I believe, from both National Grid and Verizon, because um they both kind of own the poles.
That and that's, yeah, and that unfortunately, even with the fiber project, that's something we're working through right now.
Okay.
Um it's technically, you have to go through, there's a whole department with National Grid and Verizon, it's called the pole attachment department. Um yeah, yeah, yeah. Um and um and and we have designated municipal space, that's why when you do a poll petition hearing, you'll notice in the contract, there's. Designated space, and it's only for um police, fire, telegram, and telegraph purposes, but I don't know if. Solar light is one, um other than just a regular streetlight that we have, so. It's a little bit more, clearly, I have polls are a really interesting topic.
Okay, now that ADA grant is.
Yep.
It, what is, I mean, is that something we should apply or somebody should apply for?
Yeah, I mean, um there's, I think the town has received uh ADA grants in the past for various projects, uh different accessibility projects, so for example, I think the. Annex walkway was one ADA project, I believe, years ago, um the front walkway and the railings at the. Um building on Glenwood, that was another, um so yeah, so there's. Uh there's both planning, and then there's project grants from the ADA grant program, so. Um my recommendation, just especially if it's something like infrastructure, I would recommend working with. Probably Weston and Sampson on that one, just so they can um design something that can be fully compliant, and then. Apply through the ADA grant for the the labor.
Is that something the interim can work with Weston and Sampson, or?
I would um, I would, yeah, I mean, I think the interim um could help, but but also Director Kolofsky, um if you mention it to him. Um they do, uh he does a monthly meeting uh with Weston and Sampson, if you if you mention it. Um to Ashley, so the next one is tomorrow, so I can ask them tomorrow if they can start planning for that.
Okay.
Um for the next grant round, which I believe is in the fall.
Very good, thanks, Austin.
Yep.
Um and just one point of clarification for the stormwater rates, you said we don't have to do those yet?
Yeah, uh well, so you won't have to, so the way that rates were. You don't have to change them, so um uh the only time you need to have a rate setting hearing is if you need to do a rate change, so. Um we believe the hundred dollars should be sufficient for um actually several years now. Um just based off of where the revenues are looking, and you know, I don't think for now, um. I don't, I think the town is in a good position for the the three hundred thousand that you have, or three oh five now for the budget. Um and then when the next permit comes out and we apply for that, certainly work with um with D P W to to make sure that that. Matches what our requirements are, but hundred should be fine.
Okay, so no other action needed to get the stormwater bills?
Correct, yep, yep, so the treasurer collector knows and is ready to um issue those um sooner this year as well.
Okay.
Good.
Jen, may I just confirm with you, is it okay to add the FinCom discussion to the next meeting on May twenty-seventh? Darren, would you guys like that to be a joint meeting, or do you just want it to be a discussion with a couple members?
Um we're gonna, I would gonna request a meeting on the twenty-second, next Thursday.
Okay.
And I'll.
You can let me know then?
Yeah, I'll, if you can post that one, I'll let you know, and I'll come to the meeting.
Okay, perfect.
You make it work, it's not a big.
Okay, and Jen, um are you also okay with me adding the Watcher's at Road to the May twenty-seventh agenda, or? Does Austin feel that that there will be sufficient info?
Yeah, um so my recommendation is is um have a discussion, but also have an executive session. For an opportunity for the board to have Shireen, so make sure we reach out to Shireen, um I did let her know that. The next meeting would be probably something that, you know, subject to the the chair, I think would be a good opportunity for the board to get apprised of. History there.
I was gonna say, if I may, please.
So she's aware, especially because uh count the um gentleman's council did reach out, so she kind of gave us a heads up, and then I told her that. Probably something that you guys would wanna talk to her, get that background off.
Okay.
If I may, I would feel very strongly that the board have an executive session to get the background from council as well, because. Um I believe I'm the only one that was on the board when all of that happened, and there's a lot of history there, and there's a lot of ongoing things. Um and so I just would feel most comfortable if the entire board was apprised before having interactions with.
Agree.
Um.
Yeah, and um.
Other legal representation.
At the request, if you could invite Harold, the building commissioner as well, he asked to participate, just so he can be on the same page as you guys.
Do we need any planning board representation at that meeting?
I would say no, I mean.
I think so.
No, I mean, the good thing is, is I think Shireen was involved in those and advised a planning board too, so she's got all the history there.
Okay, alright, so we'll we'll plan executive session with Harold and council to bring the board up to speed on. That matter and discuss next steps?
Yeah, if that's what I am.
No, I I agree, I think, we the, we certainly need to understand the history, so we can.
I would think you'd wanna at least invite the planning board chairman to keep him apprised of what you guys are up to.
Well, so I guess, and and just, and I don't know if you have the same thoughts, but there's nothing that the planning board can change now, right, they already did their process, so.
Okay.
Uh this is more of a select board function to talk about, I guess, what needs to be, if if that makes sense, Jen, yeah.
And I was just gonna add, um that we're also gonna have the uh finance, ratification of the finance committee appointments on the next meeting. Um just the way the timing worked out, this agenda had already been posted prior to the appointments made on Saturday, we didn't. Know, you know, what would happen, um so we will get those on for the next agenda, just in for that.
In the um, I spoke with the moderator, he'll go have the second. Or the newest one, ready to go by then, so we should be able to ratify both.
Okay, great.
Or at least consider them.
We'll have three then, cuz we'll have ten.
Ten, yes.
Okay, got it.
We got three. In just a point of order, Jen, you should vote last, cuz you have to break your tie, you shouldn't vote third. I know it's something new to you, but don't, just just so you don't get caught in the bind, you you have the deciding.
I might, I might switch the order then and start this way.
Yes, but just.
Thank you.
I've been there, done that, and it's ugly when you have to make that choice.
You can change our seats too, you can sit center, and I I don't wanna sit center, that's.
Just don't, just don't vote to last, that's all.
Alright, um any other agenda request or anything else?
Did we arrive at a decision about one, two, or how that process, are we not gonna have two people involved in talking to the?
No, we're just going to invite him to the next meeting, since we're all in agreement with the the general.
My job is done.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, no.
Well, prepare your questions.
Yeah, okay.
That's not.
Alright, um.
I do have, uh I don't know if it's a future agenda, but have, has there been any discussion on an exit interview with the current town administrator? Have we talked about that at all?
Uh we have not.
I don't know if that's an agenda item or something that should be done, I I just, I think that's an important step.
I know we did have some feedback during executive session.
Is that sufficient?
I I'm, and if I'm amenable, if the board is is looking, we can certainly.
Well, I I I I think, Alex, you bring up a good point, whatever, to me, whenever some key person in town leaves. We should have an exit to figure out what went on or why, what they're doing, even if it's a money issue, we still should have an exit interview.
Alright, well, we're we're definitely limited in time as far as when that would take place, are we looking, is that, uh here's my. Question, is that something for public meeting, executive session?
I think it should be executive session for that, I if that's possible, I don't know. But that type of thing would be an employment issue, which I think should be executive session.
I I I think that's fair, um I that I think that's a fair interpretation of. That particular exemption, for example, executive session, if not, if the alternative. that particular exemption for exam executive session, if not, if the alternative, I I could certainly make myself available, um I would also be happy to to speak with each of you individually, if that also makes sense, like we do now, in the form of an exit interview, um for you all to have kind of my thoughts as I'm transitioning out, so.
Hmm, okay.
Is that?
That may be easier too for all of you, whether some was a meeting or a phone call.
As chair, I as chair, I kind of early talked a little bit, but.
You can meet the baby. I'm kidding.
Okay.
Do it right now.
Is there a preference?
I I I think to make it easy, instead of having another meeting, we individually and then, of course, if we want to, we can have an executive session, discover all our minds, that's my thought.
I don't I don't disagree with you, Harry, I think um having kind of individual conversations and then maybe an executive session as we prepare for um uh whatever search process the board decides to, to kind of collate all of the feedback that we've gotten from the outgoing um administrator at that board.
I do agree with what I do.
So you're saying having individual session?
Have individual sessions with
Yeah.
Which is what I wanted.
Yes, yeah, and then.
And then have a executive session?
As we look towards
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
our permanent T A process.
Okay.
Include that in, you know, where we can discuss kind of all of our interpretations of.
Right. Right, okay.
So. Agreeable for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's uh yeah, that's fine, I think we should try to publicize it, though, I just don't know the right way to do that.
But the executive session?
Hmm, I mean, I I don't know.
Nobody can be there, so I don't.
No, I understand, I.
But it does still have to be on the agenda.
Yeah, I just.
You can reduce the minutes if you choose to.
Or you could do it similar, that's a good idea too, uh you could do it similar to like what maybe how the performance reviews are done, where if you have an executive session, then there's a summary document that comes written by the chair um that then becomes the public record, it's almost like a
I feel like that's that's probably the correct direction then.
Yeah. Um I think we, you know, we did that with the performance review as well and there was a summary, so.
Yeah.
Good.
So it's still move forward with everybody reaching out individually, having an executive session to collate that feedback and we'll come up with a summary that we can.
And I would say that exists, to me, that executive s- session is kind of in preparation for um the new tur- new
Expectations and yeah, yeah, for for the next.
Yeah.
For the, yeah.
Okay, um so obviously, again, with time being, if anybody, if everybody can try and reach out ideally this week with Austin.
Yeah, again, I'll make myself available, seriously, yeah, I'm not far.
Um and then, do we wanna add, do we wanna wait on the executive session on that one? Until we get a little bit, get through at least the interim in?
I would think at least get through the interim and then see, and because I think we would have the interim and then shortly after that the what the process, what the board is looking towards a process, if it's a fir- search firm or a an internal search committee or something
Right. Mm-hmm.
on what that process looks like, and then that might be the point that we would have that conversation as we prepare kind of the the job application and and or the job description and everything.
Job description. Yeah, I think, okay, is that amenable to everybody?
I think it makes sense.
Alright, so we'll reach out to Austin and then plan for a future executive session to review all that. Alright, any other?
I one more thing for the board, sorry, um I'm just thinking of all the things, I I do think that maybe an early discussion to look at the model your multi-year model.
Yeah.
Um you'll, I think recall, the first time we looked at it was September of last year, I just don't want the the board to lose track of especially with this most recent budget season, I think maybe having an early discussion, looking at the model and then setting the expectations for the year, I think it would be um a great idea to kind of start that and involve the finance committee as well.
And you're talking about the multi-year override potential that?
No, just looking overall the 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 financial model and then
Oh, the workout, okay.
Um and then you can make your policy decisions based upon those projections as well and and fine tune it, I'd be happy to to share the um the model with the board, if you wanna have that as a tool for future planning as well, and I'll make sure the interim and Donna have access to that as well.
Um this, so sorry, it just popped into my head, um charter committee has a survey out um that is available, I believe it's on the town website, um and it's posted around town and social media, so please um everyone participate in that um as we look towards the next steps for charter, I meant to do that in my update and I completely forgot, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anything else for the board?
Carol Benoit Chucky Hill, just to to support Leah with the Watch Uzit Road, everything we did is on YouTube, so it it might do a little bit of research to find those, but I would really urge, there was a lot, um
Wow.
and I and I would urge to at least look at that and you can take from it what you want, if you think that we made valid points or if you didn't um but just that there's a lot of history there, so.
And I can try to look at the dates also, I don't know if you remember.
So Jen, if I may, um I have a Watch Uzit Road folder um that I kept through that whole process um so I have all the dates, the meeting minutes, all the correspondence, town council um chapter process, everything that we went through, so if the board feels that that would be helpful I'd be happy to provide that to you, I can get it out to you tomorrow, so you have time to look through it, and then similar what Carol said parse out what you feel is relevant to the potential discussion, and then maybe when Shirin talks about it, I'm sure there will be some sort of reference to what was said then at least there'll there'll be a little bit more context, if you'd like that.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Um was there a town planner exit interview?
There was.
And is that with the board or with you? And then do you share that information with the board?
Surely upon request, um I, you know, I think my notice to the board kind of gave an idea why, I mean, it was um just to to put it bluntly, I think you said publicly, you you got a great opportunity in another community, and I don't think the budget conversation this year helped in terms of retention, so.
Anything else? Alright, um next meeting we have, May twenty seventh is the Tuesday following Memorial Day, just an off day there um and then we have June ninth and June twenty third. Any other matters to come before the board for tonight?
I mean, all is adjourned.
I was second.
Alright, we are adjourned seven thirty seven.
Record.